Let's call our meeting to order. Good evening to everyone. I want to thank each of you for joining us. Our meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube. We have one board member, Dr. Daniel Wallace, unable to be with us this evening. During our meeting, I'd like to ask each board member to state his or her name when making or seconding a motion or when speaking. At this time, I'm going to ask each board member to verbally indicate their presence when I call their name. Ms. Ursuline?
Present.
Sandra Ramsey? Present. Ms. Kathy Lewis?
Present.
And I am Ralph Fallon. Is there a motion for the Board to reconvene into open session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are now in open session. Next, I need a motion to verify that our closed session was conducted in accordance with the Code of Virginia and that only matters exempted from open meeting requirements and only matters identified in the motion to go into closed session were discussed. Is that such a motion?
So moved, Sandra Ramsey.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Our closed session has now been verified. Next, if there aren't any objections, I'm going to ask our superintendent, Dr. Perry, to lead us in a word of prayer. Dr. Perry, if you could please lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for the words of that song where the songwriter wrote that the storm is passing over. I say that, Lord, because as we look at this epidemic, we know it's not over, but there have been such great gains that have been made. I pray that you will continue to touch the minds of wise men and women, Lord, that they'll continue to make strides and that soon we can say the stormy is over. I ask now, Lord, I invoke your presence, that you will just touch each and every one of these board members, give them the wisdom, give them the heart to handle the business at hand, and we're going to thank you right now, believing that it's done, for we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. At this time, let's stand and honor our country by reciting Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is I a volunteer to read our statement of vision and our statement of mission?
I will.
Thank you.
Vision: To provide an exemplary learning environment that empowers all students to find their voices and make meaningful contributions to the world. Mission: Working together, we provide all students authentic learning experiences, knowledge and skills to become successful global citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Do we have any suggested changes to our agenda?
Yes, Chairman Fallon. I had intended to put summer hours for 12-month employees in the return to learn and missed that, so could we add to our action items?
It actually has been incorporated.
Okay, all right, well then I'm good.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, it's there.
Okay.
All right, yes, sir, thank you. Okay, then our agenda is approved by unanimous consent. Dr. Perry, attendance recognition?
Chairman Fallon, board members, give me one moment. At this time, it gives me great pleasure to share with you the attendance numbers for our staffs at the four different schools. For the month of April, we have at Copa Elementary, a 90.51% attendance. Washington District, 91.63%. Montrose Middle, 91.64%. Washington and Lee, 88.24%. If you go back and look, I think this may be one of the tightest ones we've had. One hundredth of a point separates Washington District and Montrose Middle. Glad to announce that Montrose Middle wins the trophy for this month. Absolutely an outstanding job. And I did the staffs first this time because I think sometimes we don't understand where we know, but we forget that student attendance is also tied to teacher attendance. If the teachers are going to be there pushing them every day, that is an incentive for our students to come to school every day. So, our student attendance for the month of April, Copa Elementary, 95.42%, Washington District, 96.66%, Montrose Middle, 98.24%, and Washington and Lee, 96.39%. Again, Montrose Middle, student attendance, 98.24%. They take both, is that both of the trophies?
Yes.
Wow, this is about to be a trend here. Congratulations to all schools of Montrose Middle.
Yeah, so I think we do need to congratulate both Montrose Middle and Washington District. And as always, we want to thank all of our schools for their initiatives on attendance. So, thank you very much. Okay, next, Dr. Perry, or actually, I guess, Ms. Rice, recognition of individuals who have earned Bullying Prevention Certification? Ms. Rice?
Yes, sir. I'm really excited to make this presentation. We have Jackie England in the audience with us this evening, and she's one of the individuals being recognized. Westmoreland County Schools, as you all know, started the Olveus Bullying Prevention Program just a couple of years ago, and we had key individuals such as Ms. England step up and indicate that they were willing to be trained as certified trainers, Olveus Bullying Prevention Program, certified trainer consultants. It is a really big deal to earn that certification. Ms. England and the other recipients have worked for two full years to get this certification. They traveled out of state and spent a week in certification training part one, and then they had a year's worth of assignments and practice opportunities to implement with their respective groups here in the division. All of that was monitored, and they were given feedback by a coach. And then they went back for the second round, another week of training, full week for part two of training, and then they did a second year of working as trainer consultants in training in our division so that they could finish up all the requirements to be officially certified. So, this spring, Jackie England, Patricia Eddings, School Counselor at Washington and Lee, Erica Cornwell, School Counselor at Montrose Middle School, Matthew Freeno, School Counselor at Washington District, all received their certification. Mr. Kaski is showing their certificates and their letter reads, enclosed is your certificate indicating that you are fully certified as a single-site trainer consultant in the Olveus Bullying Prevention Program. Congratulations. We have so appreciated your excellent work and dedication on behalf of the Olveus Bullying Prevention Program. And then they have to do work, it's not over yet. In order to remain a fully certified, single-site trainer consultant in good standing over the next three years, we'll simply ask you to continue to provide consultation in keeping with the Olveus model. If you have the opportunity to work with additional schools, please contact your OTAC. Let me know what that stands for. Olveus?
Olveus Technical Services.
Is that your consultant?
Yeah, my name is Deb.
Contact Deb, thank you.
I just always call it OTAC.
The OTAC. Or Jane Reese, to discuss our national two-or-more-site certification process. And then they go on with more congratulations. So, I wanted to recognize them for their incredible hard work and also maybe give Ms. England an opportunity to stay.
Yeah, they come here.
I'm saying, considering about the person.
They're paying.
Do you want to say anything about the training experience, the certification process?
I will say thank you to you guys for approving that and feeling it's, I believe it's great funded, and it is, but it was a really neat experience to go be trained in something that wasn't like something that I had learned at school. That was the first for me, to go and be like a trainer for something, that was really neat, so thank you for that. And it's been really neat to do the trainings and help the counselors do their training. I'm the only nationally certified of the five of us, so I can train other groups of people now. That's pretty cool. But their accomplishment is no less than mine. I just happen to have two groups, and if they would have had two groups, they would have been nationally certified. They did probably way more work than I did because my two groups didn't have like classroom meetings and all of that, so, but it was really nice. My two groups were food services and transportation, so just the whole program as a whole, it's just all inclusive, so it just trains everybody on the Olveus Bullying Prevention, so it's really neat. So, thank you guys for sending us to that. It's been a hard-working two years to be certified, I promise. Monthly meetings with the same lady, asking for things during a pandemic is nice. So, but anyway, thank you guys. We're excited to keep it rolling, and especially for next year if we could just come back. So, thank you.
Chairman Fallon, I would make the statement that Ms., I was going to say Ms. Moffitt, Ms. England has drastically understated the work that she has put into this program over the last couple of years. I would actually almost say that the program was designed almost for her because they are perfect fit with the work she does in every one of the schools, making sure that our counselors and everyone is on their toes. She does a tremendous amount of work, and she's earned her national certification, so we do thank and applaud her.
We do sincerely congratulate each of you that earned this certification, and along with that, it takes commitment, because it doesn't just happen, it takes commitment. So also, thank you for your commitment.
And if I could add one more thing?
Of course.
These four fully certified trainer consultants are now also a good support. We have three more individuals who are currently going through the program. Carol Alexander has completed year one and is involved in year two, so we hope to recognize her next year at this time. Cindy English-Williams from Copa Elementary is also getting certified, and Karen Jackson, Catherine Jackson, excuse me, from Washingtonly High School is working on for certification as well. So, we want to keep those folks in mind and probably in our prayers as they continue the certification process as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rice.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Perry, Transportation recognition?
Chairman Fallon, board members, if you could put that up. I'm not going to read the letter, but hopefully the letter will go up there. When I first heard about this letter and saw and spoke to Ms. Steele, this is a letter that was written specifically to and on behalf of the bus drivers at Copa Elementary, but it could easily have been written by any of our other principals concerning our bus drivers and how they have responded over the last 15 months. It was shared with me how, one day, a parent forgot to tell the school that their child, would not be able to attend the place that they normally get off, and the bus driver went, took the child, it was almost Coles Point, I think, somewhere way down there on the, and there was no one there for the child. And they waited for the child to get in the home like they're supposed to, and they could not because there was no one there. The child came, got back on the bus, and without complaining or saying a word, the driver delivered all the rest of the students, and then took this child all the way across town, I think it was beyond Oak Grove. If I have the name, if I have the locations wrong, it's still, you can get me later, but the point is, it was a long way. And what this letter says is that this is what drivers have been doing for the last 14 months, 14, 15 months. As we have been trying to get students into schools, that means that pretty much on a daily basis, a bus driver's route would change, and they did not complain, they would take those changes two or three times a week, and they would just do what needed to be done to get their children both to school safely and home safely. And that third paragraph, I will read that because I think it just says everything. It says, "It is easy to see driving an additional route, going back to pick up a student who missed the bus, or driving across town to drop off a student whose parent forgot to share the correct drop-off address as simply doing their job. However, I believe when people do something for you, whether it is their job or not, you should say, 'Thank you.'" So, we use this letter on behalf of the Copa students, just say to our bus drivers, "Thank you for going the extra mile and doing all the things that you actually read in this letter." So, that's how we want to honor our bus drivers today.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Thank you, Dr. Perry. We do want to thank not only our Copa bus drivers, but all of our drivers for your flexibility, your commitment to the education of our students, delivering food, and for keeping our children safe. So, thank all of you for that. Ms. Whibbys, do we have any written public comments that were submitted prior to our meeting?
We do not have any written ones, but I do see one there when I walked in, there's someone in there.
While she's getting that, Ms. Whibbys, I'm going to ask you to read a statement of requirements concerning public comments, please.
At this time, we will accept public comment. The Westmoreland County School Board welcomes the public and offers an opportunity to address the board during the designated time on the agenda. Speakers are asked to state their name. Speakers must refrain from discussing specific personnel issues or naming specific students. Comments must be limited to three minutes before chair is responsible for the orderly conduct of the meeting. The chair will first ask the W D. Department, okay, we don't have any written public comments. So, none submitted for the meeting, so that we invite those present who wish to speak to come to the podium one at a time. All persons who submit public comment, whether in advance or during the meeting, will receive a response in the days following the meeting.
Okay, yes, sir. If you would please come to the podium, and I guess you heard all of that, so if you could state your name, and it looks like you've already had your contact information here, so we appreciate that. So, yes, sir.
W D, school board members, Dr. Perry, ladies and gentlemen, ladies who are named as a contributor, or one of these jimpers there, or one of these children of Westmoreland County. You ever walked the halls of Washington High School with a student, you are a member of the Eagle family. We're not a flock, we're a convocation of Eagles. You know, there's two interesting facts about Eagles, don't take, don't make this very long, but one is that Eagles move through the landscape rather than by soil. They don't go to the block, they just live in the front. They hold out their wings, they basically fly there every now and then, but what they use as thermal air to raise them higher to the sky. They can fly over 125 miles of four to six hours, they can even go up to a height of 10,000 feet, but they do that with thermal air, and they fly through the air doing so, they're actually in a downward spiral, but the air raises them up because of that hot air moving rapidly. The other fact about Eagles is that they have far reaching sight. Humans have 20/20 vision, but Eagles have 25 or even 24 vision. Helps them to see up to at least a mile and a half away, and that vision helps them, it served them well because helps them to adapt to their surroundings. During my academic career in Westmoreland County School System, I've had the purpose to receive the training that I needed to become a valuable member of society, as well as, more importantly, a member of the human race, because of special education that I was exposed to as an individual. One in particular was Arthur Jones Jr., everyone affectionately called him Pelish. Coach Jones had a tremendous impact on all that he came in contact with. He was a wonderful example of a family man who instilled that into his students, and he did that by helping all people that he was in contact with to see that we were part of one family, one tribe, one race, the human race. He had a rough texture sometimes, but he was very loving, because he always had a heart and soul in all that he did. He demonstrated his character disposition to all, regardless of whatever your gender was. You fell into one of two categories, you are a son, or you're a daughter. That was it. He looked at you, he saw your soul as a person, and he accorded everyone with dignity and respect as a member. As an educator and a sports coach, Coach always provided the thermal air you needed to soar. He wanted all of this to be between some new heights, whether it be in the classroom, on the field, or as a person. He pushed you to think more than just about yourself, to see the bigger picture, and to think of the peony forest in all things. Sometimes that meant that we had to adjust our attitude, our vision, as we saw things, to see things in a different perspective, and to see all sides of the issues. With him, there were no shortcuts. He told me once, you want to get to home plate sign, you got to touch all of the bases. So, if that's the case, then he instilled hard work in you as a person, perseverance, endurance to reach home plate. On the other hand, if you were me in many ways, he would stretch out his wings and give you a protection that helped you to conquer the support that you needed. You know, many teachers write on a blackboard, and once they do that, that can be easily erased, but when he or she writes on your heart, that cannot, you will not ever be erased, it is etched into your soul forever. Coach Jones, he is the queen of century of Eagles. Therefore, I would like to propose that the new sports complex be named Arthur Jones Jr. Sports Complex. It will stand as a testament to a man who wasn't just a teacher, who wasn't just a coach, he was a friend, a true friend. It will honor a man who was a leader in our convocation of Eagles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do want to say that we always appreciate comments from the public, and everyone that submits a public comment, whether in advance of our meeting or during our meeting, will receive a response in the days following our meeting. So, again, we thank you for taking time. Our public comment period is now closed. Okay, next, we have our consent agenda, personnel appointments and resignations. You have board minutes from the April 19 school board meeting. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda for appointments, resignations, and board minutes?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is that second?
Second, Sandra Ramsey.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, our consent agenda is approved. Next, we move on to action items. First is approval of bills. Are there any questions on this, Whibbys? Is there a motion to approve payment of our bills as requested?
Captain Lewis, so moved.
Is that second?
Sandra Ramsey, second.
Say any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Whibbys, we can pay our bills. Okay, next, is approval of our 2021-2022 revised school division budget. Ms. Rice?
Yes, sir. This will be a very brief presentation. The school board adopted our budget with anticipated local revenue of $9,343,606. When our budget was submitted to the county administrator for approval by the Board of Supervisors, as is the case each year, the budget was revised. This year, it was revised only slightly. We received a reduced local revenue allocation, reduced by $66,138. Because our budget was changed slightly, once it arrived at the county administrator's office and was approved by the Board of Supervisors, it's necessary for us to bring that revision back to the school board so that you all may take action on the revised budget. So, that is the one change, the local revenue was reduced by $66,138. And if you go to the next slide, Mr. Kaski, you'll see that we made that reduction in our expenditures in the contracted building labor line. We took the entire $66,138 from that one individual line in the budget. So, that is the only change to the budget that the board adopted previously. And in case you're wondering why that line, we had increased that line significantly with our adopted 21-22 budget, so it's still increased over the previous year, and we are able to use tariffs funding in various ways to address some of our maintenance needs, our contracted building labor. So, that was an area where we could make a revision without it having a detrimental effect on the budget. So, I present this one revision to the board this evening, this one revision in our revised 21-22 budget.
Okay, any questions from this, Rice? Okay, any questions from this, Rice?
Why did they revise it?
It's my understanding that the, you know, there's the school funding formula, so the revenue that was anticipated to come in and that was presented to us at the time you all adopted our budget, didn't come in quite as high. And so, based on the school funding formula, that resulted in a reduction of sixty-six, one hundred eighty to the school division, purely based on school funding formula.
And if I may ask one more question, is that formula used statewide, or is that just for our county?
That's a formula that is used just in Westmoreland County, and it helps to determine which of the tax revenues will go to Westmoreland County schools and which will go to Colonial Beach schools.
Any additional questions? Is our motion to approve the revised budget as presented by Ms. Rice?
I move that we approve the revised twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Is that second?
Sandra Ramsey, second.
Any discussion? Ms. Lane, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So Ms. Rice, the revised budget is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have a budget resolution for appropriation of funds. Ms. Rice?
Yes, sir. Westmoreland County Schools has applied for and received several pots of federal funding through CARES. So this resolution is to be submitted to the board of supervisors to have funds that we've applied for and been awarded transferred or appropriated to the school division budget, because those funds will come into the county first, and then need to be appropriated to the school division budget. So we're seeking that we have our CARES ESER funds in the amount of five hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars and thirty-four cents appropriated to our budget. Our vision gear funds, which were for technology, internet access for students, in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-three cents. ESER Special Education Services and Supports Funds, in the amount of seven thousand, two hundred forty-one dollars and forty-seven cents. And our coronavirus relief fund, funds, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars even. And as well into the food service budget, coronavirus relief funds in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. So we need action by the board, so that we might take this resolution to the county office and have the board of supervisors appropriate these funds to the school divisions twenty twenty-one, school board and food service budgets.
Okay, any questions from this, Rice? Is our motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Rice, the resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, Ms. Washington, approval of our special education annual plan?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Each year, I come before you seeking approval for the special education annual plan. This year, as in the past, the funds we receive from I B A, Part B six eleven and six nineteen are used to raise salaries of our special education teachers, school psychologists, and intervention specialists. That part of our plan has not changed, it is the same as before. However, this year, our division has been required to set aside fifty percent of our funds to be used for coordinator early and beginning services. C E I S services, as they're called, are used for students who are not identified as having a disability, but require additional support to be successful in general education setting. So working with Ms. Washington, we were able to use the set aside funds to hire two elementary care professionals to work with students, supporting and reinforcing the education and behavior services that are provided by the general education teachers. The care professionals will deliver scientifically based interventions at both reading and math. And so we're excited that we work with students in a small group setting. So that is our only change to the plan, because of the time needs that have been created. Any other questions that we need to approach?
Any questions from you? Is there a motion to approve the special education annual plan as presented?
So moved.
All right, is that second?
Second, Sandra Ramsey.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, you got off very easy this evening, but yeah, thank you very much. Okay, next, we have approval of our summer hours for twelve-month employees. Ms. Rice?
Yes, sir. I bring this request on behalf of Dr. Perry and all the twelve-month employees. We request that offices be closed on Fridays, beginning Friday, May twenty-eighth, and ending Friday, July twenty-third, and that the hours of operation be Monday through Thursday from seven-thirty a.m. until four-thirty p.m. And this is consistent with what we have requested in previous years for twelve-month employees, with last year being the exception. We didn't do the Fridays last year, but we are requesting that Fridays be off this year.
All righty, any questions, Ms. Rice? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, it is approved, the summer hours are approved, so thank you very much. Okay, next, we have a resolution as for a superintendent of the year award for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And did we surprise you, Doctor? No? Maybe? Anyway, as we, as we all know, this has really been a challenging year for education of our students. And on behalf of the Westmoreland County School Board, I want to take this opportunity, Dr. Perry, to thank you for your leadership, your dedication, your commitment and service to our school division and our community during the past year, as we have dealt with the ramifications of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And at this time, I'm going to read a resolution, and after I read it, I'm going to ask for board approval. And this resolution is to recognize you as a Virginia Public School Division Superintendent of the Year for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And I was originally going to ask you to stand, but this is a rather long resolution, so I'm gonna read it first and then I'll ask you to stand. So, anyway, this resolution is for recognition of Virginia Public School Division Superintendents as Superintendent of the Year. Whereas, in order to ensure the health and safety of all Virginians, schools across the Commonwealth closed on March thirteenth, twenty twenty, due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And most have provided virtual instruction since then, as in-person teaching and learning evolved. And whereas, individual school division, divisions retained the autonomy to decide whether or not new instruction would continue, and the format in which the instruction would be presented. And whereas, stable and consistent leadership by local school division superintendents has been vital in serving children through the pandemic. And whereas, school division superintendents are responsible for the health, safety, welfare, and education of each child, while creating school cultures, even within a pandemic, that serve all children regardless of their circumstances. And whereas, public school division superintendents use guidance from the Centers for Disease Control, Virginia Department of Health, Virginia Department of Education, local health departments, and local case data in fulfilling leadership responsibility in their communities like no other time in their careers. And whereas, local school division superintendents worked in collaboration with their school boards, educators, parents, and community stakeholders in providing technology, resources, curriculum content, emotional support, and meals to children during the pandemic. And whereas, traditionally, superintendents of the year have been selected via a diverse panel of education associations after reviewing an individual superintendent's ability to demonstrate leadership of learning, communication, professionalism, and community involvement. Whereas, all one hundred and thirty-three Virginia school division superintendents have exhibited these qualities while leading their school divisions and communities during the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. And whereas, the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, Board of Directors, agreed on January seventh, twenty twenty-one, to suspend the traditional selection process of determining a single superintendent of the year, and agreeing to recognize and honor all Virginia Public School Division Superintendents as Superintendents of the Year for twenty twenty, twenty-one. Whereas, Virginia Association of School Superintendents is a preservative of the Virginia School Boards Association, supporting this resolution and the honor provided to each division superintendent by having his respective school board present this resolution to the superintendent to be recognized within the community with which he serves and leads. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Westmoreland County School Board does hereby recognize Dr. Michael Perry as a Virginia Superintendent of the Year for twenty twenty, twenty-one, as designated by the Virginia Association of School Superintendents. So now you can stand, Dr. Perry. And, and, and to make, to make this official, the school board has to approve this resolution. So, Ms. Lewis, have you voted for this resolution? Okay. Ms. Lane, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Yeah, and the chair votes aye. Well deserved, Dr. Perry. We all appreciate what you do. I don't know if any board members want to make any additional comments or not, but
Oh, boy, boy. Speech, speech.
Dr. Perry, uh, Dr. Perry, I didn't say you could stand. We, we, we do need to hear at least a, at least a brief comment.
You got me. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. The truth is, it is, it's a pleasure to serve this school. It really is. I am truly working with you. Love you. You guys keep me on the terms. The pandemic was, that's been some madness. I just haven't been worse. If it wasn't for these guys, who I'll get some of them a little later, but this has been a team effort. This has been a really hard fourteen, fifteen months. What can I say? Do you have a DC device? So thank you guys.
And Dr. Perry, in, in all these decisions that have had to be made, many of them don't have really a correct answer. It's truly trying to make the best decisions, given what you've dealt with, and you've been dealt with a lot, the school divisions have been dealt with a lot, so.
I had to put Pepsi by the side.
So, 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 again, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Oh, we were too excited. Okay, thank you.
I move that we
Yeah, we should, yes.
I move that we approve the resolution to recognize Dr. Perry as a Superintendent of the Year for twenty twenty-one.
Okay, second?
Second, Sandra Ramsey.
All righty, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you for keeping it a little close, Dr. Perry.
Yeah, we got it, Dr. Perry's basically. And Dr. Perry, aren't you, Lane, I didn't get you to stand for all of that resolution? Okay, so next, we have return to learn. Dr. Perry?
Chairman Fallon, I'm so glad Dr. Williams is on the line at this point. Is he on the line? Ooh, because I need just a few minutes to kind of Thank you. I don't normally get surprised, you guys, and I look over the agenda.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Rice.
Let it be noted that Mr. Fallon instructed me to keep that from you.
Okay, I'll see you tomorrow. Well, we're ready. Dr. Williams is on, and like, like we've done the last couple of months, I think it's always good to get our health indicators directly from the horse's mouth, and so we're so glad to have him here. The head of our Three Rivers Health Department to lead us, and then I'll come forth with the rest of the information, and then I'll return to life. Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Dr. Perry, and congratulations to you, sir, well deserved, and to your staff and to the school board members. You've all, you've all acted decisively with courage, and it's been an unprecedented situation over the past year and a half. So thank you to all of you for your service, and congratulations again, Dr. Perry, well, well deserved. So tonight, I just want to talk about a couple of things. Number one, the state of the pandemic. In Three Rivers, we're at really unprecedented, low-risk situation. We only detected, across all jurisdictions, forty-nine cases last week. That's about seven cases a day. And I'm sure there's a little bit of disease out there that we're not detecting, but I think not, not nearly as much as before vaccination and so on and so forth. So we're in a really good position in Three Rivers, all jurisdictions, and, and we are in a position to have a really good summer. Second thing I'll talk about is the mask situation. The CDC kind of took everybody by surprise with that sudden announcement a couple, you know, at the end of last week. Virginia has followed suit. If you look at the modified executive orders, almost every paragraph refers back to the CDC recommendations. I'm sure that, I, I did not attend, Dr. Perry, the superintendent's meeting last week, but there, the decision has been made, at least at this point, to continue masking in the school K through twelve environment for a variety of reasons. I'm, there's, of course, a lot of people unvaccinated in that environment still, and, and social reasons with, you know, if teachers aren't wearing masks, little kids, kind of hard to explain to them, and so on and so forth. So there's a lot of reasons to continue masking in that environment, but, but that leads into the third. But, and by the way, that, that's really, when you get down to particulars about when to mask and when not, that's confusing to everybody, including your folks in the health departments. My, my advice is to exercise common sense. If you're fully vaccinated, you're beyond two weeks after your, your last dose of Pfizer or Moderna vaccine, or two weeks after your Johnston Johnson vaccine, you're really, really well protected. You're unlikely to get the disease. If you do, it's possible, but it's very unlikely to be any kind of serious clinical situation, and, and if you do, you're very unlikely to give it to others. So it's, it's, these vaccines are probably the safest and most effective vaccines, from what I can see with the millions of doses that have been distributed thus far, and certainly the most effective vaccines that I've seen. Uh, and certainly the most effective vaccines that I've seen in my career, way more effective than flu vaccines are. So it's very low risk. Um, but i- if you're going into a situation where there's a whole lot of people, you're going to be up close and personal with them, uh, and you know there's a mix of vaccinated and unvaccination, unvaccinated, there's a little bit of disease out there. Or if you have chronic medical conditions, you know, pulmonary conditions or cancer or something like that, you know, severe heart disease, those sorts of things that increase your risk, diabetes, then might be a good idea, even if you're vaccinated, to, uh, you know, to protect yourself against respiratory pathogens in that, in that arena. But in almost all other circumstances, uh, if you're vaccinated, you don't really need a mask at this point, and, and you don't need to pay that much attention to the social distancing either, so all of that's good news. Uh, that leads us to the third point I wanted to talk briefly about tonight, which is, uh, the, um, not approval, but authorization for Pfizer to be used in twelve-year-olds and older. Uh, Pfizer has actually applied for, uh, approval of its vaccine, uh, across the boards. That, in twelve-year-olds and older, that, that would actually negate some of the cumbersome things we've had to deal with, like informed consent, and, and would allow a little bit more, uh, application of the vaccine in a number of environments. But, uh, that, that's probably pending, uh, and Moderna's probably not too far behind Pfizer's, uh, twelve-year-olds plus. And both of them have clinical trials going in younger kids. So I'm, I'm very hopeful that by the fall, we'll have vaccine for, uh, for all students in the K through twelve environment, and we can go ahead and, and achieve what looks very much like a normal situation. With regard to the, the vaccination program we're preparing to launch as soon as we can, um, we've been in, in contact with the school nursing personnel and with the superintendents. Um, we are, Holly Balderson is organizing our nursing teams. We've already started this in a couple of private schools that are e- easy to get to, but organizing our nursing teams to, to do two things. Number one, uh, offer the required vaccinations, HPV and the Ninja Caucus, but the requirement to wait two weeks between a vaccination of any kind and the COVID vaccination, that's been removed as well. So we can do these things in close order, uh, both mandatory vaccines and COVID vaccine programs. So our, our current plans are to, as soon as possible, deploy through the school districts with teams of nurses in conjunction with your school nursing staff to try to, well, to offer the COVID nineteen vaccine as fast as we can. Uh, if school is in session, we just need the informed consent signed by the parent or the guardian or the designee with the child. Schools are considered, uh, controlled environments, so we don't need parents present. Uh, I'm, I, I know school gets out at various times through the districts. Um, I'm hoping that we can get at least one round, that the first shot's done while school is in session. We, of course, got to work around final exams and, and other things. I guess the SOLs are, are occurring, are ongoing now. But, um, uh, the second dose will have to do after school is out, I'm sure. We'll be talking about you, potentially using the schools as venues. We will need parents present at that time. So, you know, we'll try to, uh, try to work with you as best we can to, uh, to get this done. There are options if ki- if parents want to take their kids to Rite Aid, Walgreens, or Walmart. All three of those folks do carry the Pfizer vaccine. You can probably get an appointment with them. The Riverside system also has access to Pfizer vaccine, and they're vaccinating people, uh, who are not their patients. So, uh, if you want to try, if any parent who wants to get their child vaccinated before we can get to them through the school system, they can take their, their child to, uh, any of those venues, including Riverside, and request an appointment, and, uh, uh, may be able to get it done even faster. So, um, and again, uh, pandemic isn't over by a long shot. Globally, the virus continues to evolve and cause mischief, uh, substantial problems in some areas of the world, and variants are evolving. We don't know what the fall brings, but I have every reason to hope, since our vaccines have proven themselves so effective against the variants thus far, uh, especially the UK one, which is our dominant strain right now. I'm, uh, I'm hoping that we, we have a really great summer. We can get the kids vaccinated and get back to something in the United States that looks pretty normal by next fall. Uh, Superintendent Perry, that's, that's my brief update. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from anyone to Dr. Williams?
I, I do. Dr. Williams, thank you so much for, for all that you've done for us. I have one question. Kathy Lewis, um, how long will this vaccination last before there has to be a booster or another vaccination?
You know, that's a really good question. Um, if, if you look at, at people who were infected by SARS, by the first SARS vaccine, the virus itself eighteen years ago, you can detect immunity to that vi- to that virus in, in, in many of those people. So the, the immunity itself may last for a long time, both from natural infection and from the vaccine. Antibody levels wane over time, over months, but the T-cell immunity, uh, persists, so your body recognizes the, the virus. I think that, given the variant evolution worldwide, and given the uncertainty of, of how long this is going, our immunity is going to last, you'll, you only know that by following the people in the clinical trial, and then all the millions of us that have gotten these vaccines. So that, that story evolves over time. But I think with variant evolution, it is very likely that, uh, that there, there will be offered in the fall a booster campaign to, to try to cover both waning antibody levels as well as any variants that have evolved. One of the great things about the messenger RNA vaccine is you can, you can use it very, very quickly to develop highly specifically targeted vaccines to account for evolutions in the spike protein and, and so on and so forth. So that, that's one of the advantages of this technology. But I, I think it's very likely that we will be, uh, offering and pursuing a booster campaign in the fall, probably concurrent with the first vaccination program for the really young kids.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any additional questions for Dr. Williams? Okay. Dr. Perry, did you have anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you so much, Dr. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Thank you all very much, and, uh, we will, of course, remain immediately available to you at any time for questions, help, and, and we'll be seeing you soon with the vaccine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Wow. Okay, Dr. Perry, I guess you will continue?
Yes. Dr. Williams did a great job of going over the first couple of slides, so I'm just going to hit them very quickly. The first slide, the, the next one. The hit, the caption itself says it all. Bottom line is, he just said, there is a vaccine, there is a vaccine known for children twelve, twelve to eighteen, twelve to fifteen, and that's Pfizer. If you go to the next slide, this is where it gets a little, not dicey, but as he said, they've been talking to superintendents and nurses, they want to actually give the vaccine in the school before kids go home. And although this is a decision that they kind of laid on superintendents to make, I believe this is one that the board should actually have discussion on. Uh, one of the reasons I think that you need to discuss whether or not we want to actually allow the schools to be the place where they come in and give the vaccine is because I'm thinking that you probably still going to have some parents who are going to call you and talk about the fact that school is not a clinic, and maybe talk about liability, which that in itself is not an issue. But there are probably some parents who will want to come with their children. They may not just trust this and their kids to a clinic. And to be honest, I'm probably willing to experience, if I had a younger child, I would want to be there when they do get the, um, vaccine. Um, they've said that it's, it'll be no different than when we took it. They'll take it, wait ten, fifteen minutes, and then they go back to the class. But because the community may have some questions for you, I just felt that this is maybe a, a topic that you may want to discuss before we actually take action, because I would request that you take a, a motion of whether or not to allow um, Three Rivers to come into the schools, they actually give the vaccine to the students, and that would just be middle school and high school.
Are you, are you looking to start that at this time?
Yes, at some point after discussion, yes.
Now, or do you want to finish your?
No, I, I would say now.
Now's the best time, okay.
Yes, because the only other thing on, there's one more slide that deals with this subject, and that's the next one, which, again, he touched upon, which is, there's going to be a campaign to, for parents and everyone to let them know uh, about the vaccine and the importance of getting their children, um, vaccinated.
Okay, before I ask for a motion, I would like to give board members an opportunity to ask questions.
I, I want to make a comment. I don't agree with it in the schools. I think when we took it, or most of us, there was a facility that offered lots of EMTs and nurses, and they watched us. I think this is not the place for it. I think maybe AT Johnson, where they're doing the weekly clinics with the, um, emergency medical personnel would be better for the children if they need to be monitored, and of course, their parents would come with them. I don't think it's a good idea for the, the students to receive the shot without the parents with them. But that's just me.
Right, I would just say one thing to what you said. I believe what they would do is bring a team to the schools. It wouldn't be our personnel alone, given the, um, I believe they would set it up pretty much like when we went to Warsaw. They have people, EM, EMTs, everybody there in a separate place, so it wouldn't, even though they've been contacting our nurses, I don't think, I'm pretty sure it's not just going to be our nurse or our personnel, it's going to be clinical people, real doctors and nurses. I shouldn't say real, ours are real nurses, but a team, a team.
Ms. Lane?
Also, um, my question is, parents do have to have some sort of written approval for their child to get the vaccine?
Right. And they're saying, what he said is that that in itself is sufficient. They don't believe you need parents to come, and I'm sure you don't, because you have personnel around. I'm just simply saying, I guess, I'm, I'm with Ms. Lewis in that. I just don't think every parent is going to want someone else to give that to them, so I think we're going to have to keep that in mind.
Yeah, Dr. Perry, uh, would it, wouldn't it be feasible for those children where parents have given permission and are okay with them getting in s- in school, to get in in school? And those parents that wanted to be there, perhaps to do that right after school? Is that feasible, logistical?
I think both are feasible. I think what would probably happen, based upon the discussions I've had and even talking to Dr. Williams' staff, Ms. Rice, she doesn't know she'd be one of the prime planners, but she would probably set it up just like we did at, uh, W and L. And we would probably have to, uh, have a place or allow for parents who would come to come. Cause I don't think they would deny parents to come. I'm just saying that we would probably have to, in our planning, allow for parents who would want to come.
So if it's, if it's not in the schools, you would see it being done, totally done in school day?
I do. Not after school or before, but during the course of school.
Dr. Perry, this is not a mandate. I mean, this is not mandated for every child. This is for those who choose to receive it, correct?
That is correct. That is why, again, I'm asking, I, I, I think we need to vote on it, because it's not mandated. You don't have to, um, is it better for most children? Probably. Because one of the things that they argue, and I, and again, I agree, if you notice, I haven't said one way or the other, but I believe they're correct, in that there are a lot of students who may not get the opportunity any other way. There's an equity issue. Uh, if they're in school, you can reach them. If you're depending upon some parents to get kids to a clinic, you'll have the same problem here with a lot of other things.
It seems like to me it's just, it's, uh, when you got all the children in school and everybody's already there, and you have all the, you know, the proper people giving shots and, and the proper personnel in case there's an emergency, it seems like to me that that, uh, is likely to reach more children.
I think that's their rationale.
Uh, and, and, and the children are there, and, and I do, I do, obviously, if parents want to be there, I think it's important that they have the opportunity to be there. They may even want to be there and take the child home after, afterwards. I don't know, but I would think logistically that could be worked out. Uh, Ms. Ramsey, I want to make sure you have an opportunity to speak.
I, um, I don't know, so, I'll, I'll vote, will we vote?
And if the numbers don't represent a large enough scale of those children, would it, I mean, would you tie Three Rivers Health District's personnel for a few children? I mean, I don't know.
I believe they would.
Do we have the numbers?
I believe they would.
Do we have any idea of what the numbers may look like?
No, again, the next slide, it talks about the fact that there's going to be a student vaccination campaign. Go to the next slide, Tom. You know, he mentioned the fact that Holly Balderson will, she'll be contacting nurses, discussing planning and timing for the first dose campaign. Campaign will require parental informed consent. We'll be sending things home, um, probably even doing alert nouns and all those things. Um, this is directly from the, uh, from their, um, brochure. That's why you see we do not leave parental presence in schools will be required and so forth. We can probably vaccinate all eligible students in a single school in each jurisdiction. Notice they're saying we. They will be coming in as a team. It will not just be us. It will be in, uh, in conjunction with us. And they're asking, they're, they're pleading with school systems to allow them to come in, understanding that if a parent doesn't want their child vaccinated, the child will not be vaccinated. So there is not a matter of you voting to force somebody, because you won't force anyone to be vaccinated. If a parent says no, it's no, but you will be giving those the opportunity who may not have the opportunity otherwise.
Hey, yeah, yes, Ms. Lane?
Does the school system face any liabilities?
None, we don't.
Okay. We still have lots of teachers who haven't been vaccinated as of this point, right?
I wouldn't say lots. There are some, yes. Probably not lots.
More than two.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, you know, the, we are, we certainly want to vaccinate as many of the students as we can. There's, uh, we want to do everything possible, I think, to keep our schools open, come to new school. Are there any other questions for Dr. Perry? Okay, he, he needs a, Dr. Perry needs a decision of some sort this evening, so, uh...
And let me just add one other thing.
Yes, sir.
The only reason I'm asking for a vote tonight is, they're pretty sure that for schools such as ours, who get out before Memorial Day, they'll only be able to get one shot, uh, and then they will work to do what they need to do in the summer. But they are hoping that they can get at least one shot for every school to do.
Okay, does anyone have any more questions, comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to allow whomever wants to receive this under Dr. Perry's supervision or scheduling that we allow in the schools in Montrose Middle and Washington and Lake?
Yes, ma'am.
As soon as we can. As soon as we can.
Is there a second? All right, any more discussion? Ms. Lewis, how do you vote? Ms. Lane? Ms. Ramsey? And Chair votes aye. And Dr. Perry, you have your decision.
Okay, thank you. The next, next series of slides all deal with, again, Dr. Williams touched upon the mask. But specifically Executive Order seventy-two and Executive Order seventy-nine. I had about five, five or six, uh, slides that I was going to go in details on. Executive Order seventy-two, but I decided not to, because on May twenty-eighth. Uh, Executive Order seventy-two goes away, and Executive Order seventy-nine takes its place. Right now, on the E O, and that's only what, a week and a half, two weeks away. Uh, right now, the bottom line is that in every school, you have to wear, everybody has to wear masks until the end of the school year. Until the twenty-eighth. But on the twenty-eighth, Executive Order seventy-nine effectively removes all restrictions. That have been outlined in Executive Order seventy-two, uh, related to COVID nineteen. That's a, that's a interesting way of ba- bait of bottom line saying, no more six-foot distancing, no more masks. No more mitigation factors will be mandated. But I will say to you, that doesn't mean we won't keep them, some of them, but they will no longer be mandated. How does that affect us? We have the very first thing has to do with graduation. And grad, for our graduation, Washington Lee High School has been working to make sure everybody had ten-foot distancing. On the field and make sure the mask and all the, uh, uh, signage was up according to Executive Order seventy-two. Executive Order seventy-two will be gone, as a result, Washington Lee seniors will now, let me see, does that change this? Okay, but the way, the reason I wrote it this way is because I've spoken to administration. They understand that those things will not exist come the twenty-eighth. Our graduation is the twenty-ninth, and I shouldn't say this, but I'm gonna say this. I was asked, well, we've done a lot of planning, we've done all of this planning, can we just keep everything in place? I say you can if you want to, but remember this, everybody's gonna know that all of these things have been done away with. And if you try to keep all the distancing and this and that, I can't be responsible for what may happen on the field. They laughed, it was kind of a joke. Bottom line being that they were saying, we worked so hard and now it's gone, and it is. And it's, it's just one of those things where, he said everybody was stunned, we're still kind of stunned. They have worked very hard, we had said we would give two tickets, and they have worked very hard. I was excited to announce tonight that they would be able to give three tickets. And now, the bottom line is, the only reason they'll give tickets is for a rain day. Uh, they're considering, I can't give you a lot of details now, because they're still considering so many things. Um, considering whether to put the stage back where it has been traditionally, and then maybe, I mean, just a lot of things on the consideration. This order changes everything, it just literally changes everything. But I can say this, that it is the expectation that the school board will march. They are gonna have the, their procession, they're expecting that we'll be there and that we march. Um, they have not panned out all the details of whether, how we're gonna actually issue diplomas. Whether we can shake hands and all those things. Because again, even though the order has changed, you can't dictate that a pandemic ends. And so there's some things that are gonna linger, that there are just some things gonna linger. But the bottom line is, a lot of those grandmamas that have been calling you, calling me, they will be very happy. Because of Executive Order seventy-nine.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on that? That's probably, yeah, Mr. Coleman. All right, there's one other thing. Yes, ma'am.
I think you say that even though it's not, some of the, um, mitigation factors are not required.
Yes.
That the school system or the school can still implement some of the mitigation factors.
There are some things we are not gonna remove.
A mask.
Right, and we have to talk about masking, because I know there are a lot of people who are not going to want to give up their mask.
Right.
And so we may have to, we're gonna talk about whether to make them optional. Uh, but the cleaning, we're gonna continue to mandate that, uh, with the sprayers. Cleaning is, we probably will not take the water bottle stations down. Uh, there's just some things that we've done, I don't see us reversing. And we're gonna have to work with some of the others, and the mask is one of them, because. One of the questions I raised Friday was, I don't want a situation where people get bullied. Because some people are gonna want to wear their mask, and some people don't. Uh, I can easily see that becoming a bullying type situation. So we're gonna have to put some things in place where people can feel free to do what they've either grown accustomed to. Or are still afraid of, so we, we, we have some conversations to do on that. We're not just gonna remove them all just because of Executive Order seventy-nine. Senate Bill thirteen oh three, this has been one of the, one of the most discussed and talked about bills. The Commonwealth of Virginia has made it a legal requirement for all school divisions to offer five days of in-person instruction. For all students in the fall. That's the law, legal requirement. As a result, as we begin to plan ahead, couple of things that we're looking at. On July, we're going to effectively transition, we're gonna transition to five days of in-person, in-person learning. Um, within, let me just read it where it was written, because I like the way it's written. Uh, when the Senate Bill thirteen oh three becomes effective in July twenty twenty-one. Westmoreland County Public Schools will transition from providing in-person learning within the strict parameters of the CDC guidance. To follow the Virginia law and applying, which is your question, Ms. Lane, CDC guidance, to the maximum extent practical. There will be limited virtual enrollment. Virtual enrollment will be limited to students with documented COVID nineteen-related health or medical needs. And/or maybe some targeted students that we're in discussion about. But the goal is face-to-face in-person learning, that's. Uh, but we do not intend to lose the capacity to utilize virtual learning.
Dr. Perry, will our teachers be doing the limited virtual enrollment, uh, classroom?
It is our intention that they will not be.
Okay.
But we are, what I am looking is like, for example, one of the ways they can keep the virtual, not lose their virtual capacity that they've learned. Something as small as if our homework is given through Chromebooks, then teachers can always check. You can keep better track of who's doing what, who's not. And you can, as long as the students are still using, you can more easily move in and move out. If there comes a time again where we have to go back out all virtual. So we're gonna do things to keep the capacity, but they will not have to teach the two different audiences. Again, as we plan, a lot of things have to be looked at, the different schedules, I just put bill schedules for schools, bus schedules. Um, I mentioned this before, but I want to mention this in this venue, that come May twenty-eighth. Bus issues that we've been dealing with will disappear, because now you, instead of having three buses delivering sixty kids. You can put sixty kids on a one bus with a six, seven-seat capacity, you know, because it goes away. So we'll have much more flexibility in transportation. Um, we do want to explore outdoor learning capacity, I know there are a lot of divisions doing a lot of things, such as putting up removable tents and so forth. But we'll, we'll talk and look at those kinds of things. Um, already beginning to work on, uh, schedules for the fall. If you look at the very bottom, because I think this was a question that kind of came up, but not quite. But immunization requirements, at this time, there is no requirement for students to receive a COVID nineteen vaccine for school entrance. That's something that's been very important to a lot of people, it is not mandatory. Uh, students can, but it is not a requirement that they do that to go to school. And I believe the last, we have two other things, summer school, just wanted to put a couple of things, a couple of bullets there for summer school. Uh, we finalize personnel recommendations, schedules are being, uh, completed. Communication to parents and students will be ready to release tomorrow. Student attendees, they're still in the process of identifying and completing the rosters. Curriculum has been selected for the courses and grade levels, and transportation will be completed as soon as student selection is complete. So everything is basically in place for summer school, and just finalizing the routes and student attendance. We are very mindful of the fact that Juneteenth was designated as a state holiday. Um, because Juneteenth comes on Saturday, the nineteenth, June nineteenth. Uh, for us, Friday, June eighteenth, uh, we will celebrate, and then we are designated as Juneteenth. Students will not be in, uh, school on that day, but for any other personnel, um, that is a day that they'll have some options. Um, even though we've said that we're off on Friday, twelve-month employees don't always do what is voted on. Some of them won't go home and rest or take holidays off. And if you wonder who I'm talking about, look at all the people smiling and laughing around the room, oops, that's every one of them. They just won't go home, but we're gonna force them to go home on June eighteenth, celebrate Juneteenth.
So how are you gonna force that?
We'll lock the doors.
Oh, okay, okay.
All I have to do is tell that fellow right there, change your locks and don't give it to him, it's done, what you do every year, right? There you go. So we can keep them out. Um, I believe the last, the last point I want to make, during the month of June, Ms. Rice, and actually, she should have done this, but. We're looking at, you know, we got a lot of funds coming in, the, those last, those last buckets of money, you know, American Rescue Plan. And what we have to do during the month of June is we have to hold a community meeting, um, to get consultation and stakeholders. Input on the plans that we have. And actually, this comes at a good time, because we're gonna get the plans to you in July, but, uh, it'll be good, this, we're gonna use at least one day. Probably one day in June, um, set it up, they'll come in, people will see our plans, both the return to learn, as well as the financial, um, plan for. The S R S funds, we'll get that input, I'll use that to finalize, uh, the, in particular, the, um. Capital Improvement Plan that we're working on for you in July. And that is our report for tonight.
Okay, questions for Dr. Perry?
Yes. The fire department has indicated they haven't been in the new school. And I'm thinking, and I know Mrs. Lewis and I have talked, um. That it would be a good thing for them to go through and see where everything is, and the expansion joints and the sprinklers and.
Before it's covered up with sheet wrap?
Yeah, before everything's covered up.
Okay.
And actually, for the active officers, ones who are out on the road, to go through there. I mean, we've, we had the bigwigs from the office join us last week. But, um, I think the active officers, you know, they're all active, but the ones who are on the road.
It's a good, good idea, we'll set it up, I'll set it up with Tom.
Other questions, comments? Anything else, Ms. Ramsey?
Nothing, that, nothing.
Okay, Dr. Perry, when you get a chance, I think we can move on to the telegraph report.
Okay. Chairman Fallon, board members, our facility update for the month of May. We'll just go straight to, these first two or three slides, they basically work with, they deal with what we're working on with. Both the architects and with the, uh, contractors at this point. We have, we've settled the issue of the auditorium. Um, pretty much every other thing as far as the classrooms and so forth inside the building. We're pretty sure where they're going to be and what's going to, uh, happen. But what we're trying to do right now is, we're trying to get as much as we can out of the rest of the money. That's left in the contingency, and we want to get branch to do as much as they can before they leave that site. As we said in last month, the grounds have kind of been messed up a little bit for schools. Because of building the facility itself, so we're trying to get as much as we can on the grounds. If you look at this first slide, every item here is an item that we believe that we can get through. Currently, we have five hundred ninety-nine thousands and thousand and some cents left in the contingency. And I will come back to that at another point. We're believing that based upon the, then the figures that we've been given, that we can, one. And give me just a little time, I want to read through each one of these, that we can regrade the football field to competition level. That means putting the crown in the middle, um, and have it orchestrated and negotiated. Where it will be running north and south, which it needs to do, uh, for both sun and for runoff. Also adjust any surrounding grading, including the practice field as required according to, uh. The promise of D E Q and what is good according to the contractors and the architect. There's one thing we want to do, we want to get the fields at least graded out before branch leaves. We also want to put in an irrigation system for the football field. That was priced at around twenty-eight thousand. First, we were talking about doing it and not putting it in, but in the, when you look at forty, forty-six million dollars. Fourteen or twenty-eight thousand dollars is a small item to leave out, they have to come back and cheer up your field and everything else, so. We believe that we can get this now, when we get the football field great. Uh, we wanted an eight, eight lane track, um, and they would have done that with asphalt. But again, with the money that we're looking at, we think we can go ahead and upgrade the service, the surface now. Uh, get a rubber track, rubber surface, which is the preferred. Again, look at all the field items, your, 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 your shot put pit, your, uh, running broad jump, standing broad jump. Put all those things where they need to be, we believe we can do that with existing money. Uh, not only that, we believe that we can provide, provide fully functioning lights, stadium lights. With the understanding that the bleachers will have to be installed later, but the lights are key, we believe we can get the lights. We also believe that we can provide the security fence, as shown in the original bid documents, in the original bid documents. There would, there was gonna be a fence around the property, that property, because you can't have a football field where everybody just walk up and look. I mean, that football pays for all the other schools, so you gotta have it fenced off so you can get the revenue. So we believe we can put the fence back in, we believe that we can pay for an equipment shed. Uh, we're gonna build a small one that we believe we can put the shed in with the power, in other words, bring power to it. Like was in the original documents, we believe we can provide a scoreboard with power. And power to the, um, to, to the data grid and everything again, according to the original bid documents. And we believe that we can provide an access drive that goes around, around the back of the field for emergency vehicles. This, we believe we can do, originally, the price for these things came out to around several hundred thousand dollars. Currently, we have six hundred thousand dollars in the contingency. It may take a little bit from the school, from our fund balance to get this done, but we believe we can get this done. But not only that, we believe we should get this done, because if we don't get it done, I'm just afraid of what's gonna happen down the road. This is almost like, if you don't put the foundation, you can't do much building later. And I, we just really believe that this, we can get done, and I believe we should get it done. Mr. Resavi did come, did call me last week and let me know that he's having an issue with finding money for F F and E. Um, again, this is one of those where, you know, we've been told, we've been promised, this is, you know, they're taken care of. And he's saying that he might have to take money from the contingency to do the F F and E. Well, you know, well, I should be nice. I believe that this can be done. I believe that they can find the money for that. I believe he will. He's a smart guy. I believe he's gonna work that out. So I believe that the, this is, this we can do. This we can do.
And Dr. Perry, can you define F F and E?
Uh, furniture fixtures and equipment. Uh, all the, you remember you were looking at all the chairs and all that stuff? And you remember we had a presentation where he had found the money, they were gonna pay for it and so forth. So I believe that they, he still can do that. So this, I believe, is a must. The next, this is what we also hope to do, but if you notice, this is just, this is just all rough end work. Um, we believe that, you know, they can pull the power conduit without pulling the power out for, uh, the concession stand. Um, that's just pulling the power to it, but it's not connected. Um, the same thing to where the press box would be, they'll pull the power, but it won't be connected. In fact, they'll just pull the conduit, you can pull the cable out later. And the last one was providing warden sanitary pipe to the future concession stand location. They're gonna, they're going to identify where those things will be, and they'll pull the pipes and things to those locations. That won't cost that much. We believe that they can do, can do and will do the rough end work. Uh, they said they can. The next slide is what we probably cannot do. We would love to, but at this point, based upon the money we're looking at, uh, we don't think we can get the bleachers and all the other things associated, press box, uh, the concession, uh, concession stand and restrooms. Those are the three things that, as much as I would love to, and we were trying to at least get one, but I'm just not sure if we can get anything from this list. They are necessary. I just don't know if we can, we can afford to get anything from this list. We're trying though, but I just don't know if the money's gonna be there for any other. And I will say this to Mr. Fallon, because I, you know, I've had a lot of conversations with him, he did, said in this one conversation, I was with, uh, Mr. Paul Clea, and Paul did tell me, we were trying to get the concession stand. And he did tell me this, and he said, I need to think really, really hard about maybe getting the bleachers, forgetting about the concession stand and just renting and bringing out porta potties. He said, because you can eventually, you'll, you'll get that, he said, but if you get the field, people are gonna want to have somewhere to sit, so maybe you should think bleachers first instead of concession stands, so. Haven't totally got my hand wrapped around that. We're, we're gonna try to get something from this list, just not a guarantee at this point.
Because that was my question. Where are the people going to, to stand around the field and watch the game?
No, we probably, we won't have games out there until you get bleachers.
Okay.
Yeah, they could practice out there and do a lot of other things, but they won't have a game until they get the bleachers.
Right, and if you do the, uh, bleachers and press box first, then you do have to have restrooms. And, and you can bring in porta potties, but you have to have somewhere where people can wash hands. It gets, it gets a little, and you have to bring in food trucks for that. And so it gets a little bit complicated. And then the other thing is, I think if you compare the cost of the stadium and press box to the cost of the concession stand, concession stand will be somewhat cheaper. So, so it's kind of the proper order of doing things. And, uh, it's not totally straightforward, but I think it was worth it for that.
It's, when you get to this slide, this is where it's getting complicated, because you're looking at very little money and you want to do something, because again, I believe the more we can get while we have branch bills out there, the better off we are. Um, but that's kind of where we are.
But I, I do think, Dr. Perry, what you have on the previous slide are the most important things
Yes.
for branch bills to do while they're still here.
Those are all your foundation things. Everything will be in place that you can come back and you can build later. Um, and I did tell Paul this, I would hope that when we do finish with branch, that, I don't know how we do it, but you can't wait too long to get the rest of these items. Uh, we're, we're gonna have to move again.
Yeah, well, the other thing that is, is obvious, I guess, but the cost increases
Yeah.
have been outrageous. And we've already been hit by that with the auditorium fitter.
Yep, and with the steel that was delayed.
Right, so, uh.
They're getting expensive.
Oh, yes, Ms. Ramsey.
So, an approximate total of everything to complete is seven hundred thousand, is what you're saying?
No.
No.
The first, the first slide, it takes seven hundred thousand to complete. This page that you're looking at right now, this is probably a nine hundred thousand dollar page. I actually had the numbers, I brought the numbers with me.
Yeah, I was thinking.
This is a nine hundred thousand dollar page.
What, rather, sooner than later, we need to take it to the community. And there's ways of fundraising to get the things we need. And I think, you know, there's a lot of people out there that would be willing to give to the sports program. Um, but I don't think, you know, if we want branch to do it while they're here, we need to get on it now. And then any money that the county comes up with will be over and above what we can get.
Mr. Resavi has given me a couple of grant-type things that I'm looking at and a couple of other things that we can get some money, just, you know, that takes time. We, we're actually at the point where we're kind of running out of time, because branch needs lead time to do certain things. Um, but that's why the prior slide, where at least they'll identify and they'll have the places, that is actually big, because you can always just, you know, that's like building a pair for a house and then just bringing the house. So that is huge, but you don't want it to sit out there too long.
Yeah, and, you know, how many high schools do you know get built and the kids can't use the athletic fields? Because there isn't one. It's just, it doesn't, we've come too far for this.
Yeah. We, and I think we, we know that.
Yeah, I know, I know you do, but, you know, I don't think we should just sit and wait for the county to find the money.
We, we, we're looking, we're real running, I promise you, I'm looking for that. We, we, we're working. This is just where we are today. I, I haven't given up trying to find other sources.
Well, even this, Dr. Perry, is more than it looked like it would be not too long ago.
Right.
I mean, this is.
Yeah, it, even a month ago, that first list was definitely that long. There wasn't a whole lot on it, but.
And they, and Dr. Perry mentioned the, uh, the timeframe. Actually, one of the decisions that had to be made that had to do with the, uh, the site plan and also getting DEQ from that.
Right.
And DEQ permits aren't easy to get.
Right.
Uh, well, one of those decisions had to be made by May fifteenth. So it, it's. But yeah, you're right. We'd like to get all of it.
So the naming of the new athletic fields, is it too early for that? The complex? Talking about Westmoreland County's fields, I'm talking about Westmoreland High School fields.
I would say probably if I were to wait, because you want to induct and do both at the same time. I, I did hear that too, and I was like, I think it's confusing.
Yeah, because those are Westmoreland County-owned fields, and they were built by funding.
Right, those are the.
Being.
But these, the fields, the football field and the
Yeah, that would be.
baseball, softball will be here. And I have, I have a recommendation for a name, but if it's too early, it's too early.
Yeah, I think it's too early.
Probably just a little bit too early.
Well, we, we put signage out for two years before we even named the other school.
Well, the thing is, we have to, we have to make sure it's gonna be there. Kind of, I guess. But you, but we, I don't, well, this, this, this has not been done yet. I understand what you're saying.
There are my numbers.
We don't have all the fun yet to complete all this, but.
I under, yeah.
Yeah, but, but.
I was kind of.
But I don't, I don't think we, I don't, I really don't think we'd fall off from being able to do that.
But I don't think a name would make a difference. I think if anything, it would.
Add to the enthusiasm.
Enthusiasm, if I'm correct, but I just know what my choice would be. So.
Well, uh, we would need to put that as on the agenda, and we can do that soon, I think. And I think that's already some, I know there's already some fundraising underway on the basis of what.
I understand, but the community, I mean, we need to get it out there.
Okay, other, uh, we haven't finished, but.
Very quickly, last three, Copa Elementary, we've signed a contract with Remon Parker to design the new entryway. We can't wait to get that back from us. Um, for us, the company who bid on the Montross Middle Entryway redesign, they've agreed to basically hold the same price, uh, but we're working with them. We've got a little work we have to do to get them to come in, but we're working on it. And again, always keep the substantial, substantial completion date of February one in front of you. And there's a view of your courtyard going into your school. Thank you so much.
Okay, any questions? Any more questions, comments?
Just about the, um, middle school, I mean, what's, what's the holdup on getting the, I mean, we had the design done two years ago.
Right.
What, what's the holdup?
We didn't have the money at that time. And right now, we, we, we think we have the money, but that's part of what June is all about. We've got to at least, we got to get approval for the funds that we want to use. And as soon as we get approval, then we can go forward.
Okay, anything else? Okay, Dr. Perry, upcoming events?
Upcoming events. Now, I was just thinking, there was something I was supposed to. Okay, I know what it is. Upcoming events, June fourth, V S B A School Law Conference, virtual. July seventh, Westmoreland County Board School Board Retreat, that will be in person. July twentieth, V S B A Conference on Education, that will be virtual.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Okay, Ms. Ramsey, you have any more comments?
No, thank you, everybody, for coming out, sticking with us. Love to see your shining faces.
Okay, Ms. Lewis?
Can we go back into a closed session after this? I have a question.
We, we will.
Okay.
Okay, anything, anything else?
No, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, and the time we, uh, have our next board meeting, uh, graduation will take in place and promotions will, uh, be identified, so I do want to make sure that we congratulate all of our graduates and also those that are being promoted to the next grade. And, uh, those of you that, uh, have stuck with us tonight, thank you very much. Dr. Perry, any?
I do have one thing I want to share, it's really an announcement. Most of us have met Melanie Henning, Hennington of, um, Remon Parker. About three weeks ago, she contacted me because she wanted to do something for the school system on a continuous basis. And two days ago, she contacted me and she said she wants to donate five thousand dollars towards scholarships. And so what I told her that we would do is we're gonna split that five thousand into two scholarships of twenty-five hundred. I told Mr. Coleman to find two students. Ms. Long has also identified some students she's been working with. Because rather than have them apply for the, um, scholarship, we're going to simply award. And the reason we're gonna apply versus award, because our students leave a lot of money on the table sometimes. I don't know, because they don't know about it or what, so we're going to find students who are going, they can be trade school, community school, or university. And we're going to award them, um, these scholarships, uh, in the name of Remon Parker. So that was an exciting deal for us.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Dr. Perry?
That was it.
Okay, we're gonna take a very brief recess, so the board can go back into closed session.